Good evening, everybody. Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and this is a regular meeting of the Moscow City Council. Gina.
Hello, lively crowd. Welcome. If you are able, please do stand with us and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First thing up tonight is a proclamation for Memorial Day. And this is how it goes. Whereas Memorial Day, originally called Decoration Day, is a day of remembrance for those who died in our nation's service. And whereas Memorial Day was initially proclaimed on May fifth, eighteen sixty-eight, by General John Logan, National Commander of the Grand Army of the Republic in his General Order Number Eleven. And whereas Memorial Day was first observed on May thirtieth, eighteen sixty-eight, when flowers were placed on the graves of Union and Confederate soldiers at Arlington National Cemetery. And whereas our predecessors fought in wars so that future generations would have freedom. And whereas they helped shape the society that we know today, including our political, economic, military, and social systems, advances in science and technology, and cultural traditions that enrich our heritage. And whereas it's important on Memorial Day to reflect on the whole life memories of military personnel who fought and died for our country, to preserve the rights guaranteed under the U.S. Constitution and to keep our nation strong. And whereas Memorial Day gives us the opportunity to renew our patriotism and to articulate our common desire to live in freedom and seek peace so that our nation's veterans will not have died in vain. Now, therefore, I, Art Bedke, the mayor of the city of Moscow, Idaho, do hereby recognize May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Memorial Day in the city, and I urge all citizens to honor those who have died in service to our country. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Moving on, next up is the Consent Agenda. And this consists of items that have been previously vetted by the Administrative or Public Works and Finance Committees and consist mostly of routine or housekeeping-type items. Any item on the Consent Agenda can be pulled by a member of council for a separate consideration.
I move we approve the Consent Agenda?
Second. Moving seconded. Okay, Gina.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
Okay. Next up, we have mayors' appointments, of whom I have four tonight. First up, appointing Nathan Tupper to the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission, expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six. Kayla Youngren to the Historic Preservation Commission, expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-seven. James Huggins to Human Rights Commission, expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six. And Sarah Tucker to the Transportation Commission, expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve these four appointees to their commissions. Second.
Moved and seconded. No discussion. Bryce.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
And Sandra.
Yes. Aye.
Any of our newly appointed people out there? Well, if anybody would like, would you like to come up and say a few words? Please avail yourself, introduce yourself, and give us a few words.
Thank you for the appointment. I appreciate it. My name's Kayla Youngren. My interest in the historic preservation of Moscow is actually kind of personal. I moved to Moscow. I remembered hearing stories of my dad visiting here when he was a kid. But I didn't realize how far back the history of our family went here until I just randomly decided to Google some people's names and discovered that actually Percifer and Rachel Smith were some of the first settlers. They were on Thorn Creek Road, and their land was actually part of, like, the original Idaho Territory. So it was, it's exciting and interesting to me to learn more about my family. And also, I do care a lot about the town that they helped start and build, continuing and being preserved, and more people knowing about it.
Well, good. Have fun with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Tucker. I am now serving on the Transportation Commission. Really amazing. Thank you very much. I'm really excited about it because a part of Moscow that makes it so livable is the walkability. So when my husband and I moved to Moscow, we actually donated our car and decided to go full pedestrian until the weather turned and we turned to Smart Transit. So now I'm serving as board president at Smart Transit. It's been really insightful and a really fun way to, like, flex my passion for policy, which is odd, but a good outlet. So thank you again.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello, Mayor and council members. I'm Jim Huggins, and I'm thankful for you to appoint me to the Human Rights Commission. And my interests are personal, family, and friends, discrimination, and equal rights. And I've been on the later kind of Human Rights Task Force for several years and the Northwest Coalition for Human Rights. I was on it and had the words Idaho to add social orientation and gender identity to the Idaho state laws. So I've had a long history of doing this, and I haven't done any of it for a while. I'm really interested in equality and human rights. And I saw that there was an opening, and I'm very happy to be in this position to help the city and the other people and work with the other board members. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes. Thanks so much.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
So I was texting with Nathan Tupper today. I told him, "Congrats on the appointment." And he is currently serving in a deployment as per the National Guard. And he is currently in Kosovo, but he's coming back, and he will start fulfilling his appointment this summer.
Oh, very good.
But he's very excited. He's very excited, and he's excited to be part of the commission and excited to give back to Moscow.
Thanks for the presentation on Nathan's back.
You're welcome. He did say I could mention it, so I did get that affirmative. So.
Okay, smooth us on to public comment. And for the next fifteen minutes, divvied up into three-minute increments, we invite members of the public to come up to that very podium, announce your name, where you are, where you're from, and then tell us what's on your mind, as long as it's not on tonight's agenda, nor pending before Planning and Zoning Commission, nor the Board of Adjustment, nor involved with litigation. So other than that heap of things that you can't talk about, would anybody like to avail themselves? Okay. Nothing. Okay, on to the meat of the meeting. Stormwater Code amendments and standards adoption with Ty Thompson. Hi, the podium is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bedke, council members. It's been a while. It's good to see you all again. As mentioned, we're here to talk about stormwater. So I'll jump right in. We've got, there's quite a bit here. You know, you've all had a, I hope, had a chance to look at your packet. It's dense, it's deep, so I'm going to go through at a level that I think is going to give enough without just getting too far in the weeds. So please let me know if you have any questions throughout the presentation here. So the reason that I'm here today and what's brought us here is the city has an MS four municipal separate storm sewer system permit that was issued to us by the U.S. EPA. It's applicable to all of the stormwater system in Moscow, which includes things like catch basins, the actual storm sewer system, the creeks that the systems drain to. We are in our second permit term. Those terms are five years each. I came to you at the end of, oh, about a year ago, as we came to the end of the last permit. We successfully completed that with no issues, and here we are on round two. That permit has been just administratively continued, so it is the same permit that we had with all those same requirements. Before I move forward, I just kind of want to talk a little bit about the impact that this has had so far. Because we do have this permit, we initiated the stormwater utility and created the Stormwater Operations Department in two thousand and twenty-one. Those folks, you know, take care of all the day-to-day operations, make sure that it works. Also created a new position in two thousand and twenty-two, which is the Environmental Compliance Inspector position. And, you know, does all of the things that are the compliance-related as far as this permit goes, as well as some other operations. Just real quick, you know, in the last year, stormwater operations, they're out there every day doing these sort of things. The amount of stuff, all of that material that were removed, would fill up council chambers nearly four times. One of the biggest things here is that closed-circuit TV inspections that we have now, we actually go out and take a look at what our system is looking like and can identify issues before they occur. All of these things, if they did happen before we had the utility and this operations department, were all reactionary. Didn't happen essentially until there was a problem. So now we have some proactive actions to make sure our system works well. The Environmental Specter position took over. A lot of these things were done by the engineering folks when they could, when there was a complaint. So these things that the inspector does, those operational things are, it's just a snapshot, it's a little bit of the things they do. But it's important to note that this does and has had a real impact on our community and on the infrastructure of our stormwater systems. So back to the fun stuff. That permit, our stormwater permit, has certain legal requirements that we must meet. We have to maintain legal authority. We'll do that through city code. We have to maintain a set of enforcement response policies and then have a written set of standards for best management practices. I'll hit on all these as we move forward here. Legal authority required. So we took a look. We have, our current code is in three different chapters, as you see here. There are, there's a lot there. It's spread out all over the place. A lot of those chapters are fairly old, except for the stormwater user fee one. And there are some areas that needed cleaned up and tightened up to comply with our permit. So most of those chapters were repealed or the portions thereof, as you saw on your packet, with some changes. I'll kind of touch on just some of those changes. Most of those codes are just rolled into this new Title V, Chapter Fifteen, Stormwater Regulations code. One of those is, and most of these, again, are just meeting the requirements of that MS four permit. These are the specifics of what the designs have to be, what the designers have to use to meet the requirements of that permit. So point eight-two inches in a twenty-four-hour time period for things like our stormwater detention ponds, for the piping that carries and conveys that sort of stuff. Our permit requires specifically retention of stormwater. So anything that falls on impervious surface, you know, concrete, asphalt, et cetera, has to be retained on that property. And typically, that means have a basin, catch it, and then it infiltrates down into the ground. Well, if you've ever put a shovel into the dirt here, that is largely not possible to infiltrate here in the city. We had a pretty in-depth study done to demonstrate that. So the option that we have is to require detention, which is holding it for a short period of time and then releasing that stormwater in a way that doesn't affect downstream, prevents flooding, those sort of things. We have to do that, and that's the current requirement. But it also requires a treatment equivalent to remove pollutants that is equivalent to that retention standard. So it is a change, and, you know, I'll talk a little bit about that more. Those are addressed in our BMP manual. Got ahead of myself. So in compliance with that manual, as well as all of the other city codes and design standards, which our engineering crew and our public utilities folks have been working on and will be in front of you sometimes. Another change, the previously, it talked about erosion risk categories. Pretty vague and broad. That was not very modern interpretation or, I guess, application of ESC-type things. So we've moved that to erosion and sediment control plans consideration. So that's a document that spells out exactly how you're going to manage erosion and sediment control through the construction process. We've changed and set a minimum threshold, so this is like a twenty-by-thirty building. We don't want anyone that's putting a little ten-by-ten shed to have to do these sort of things. But it does, you know, it's a minimum there. Again, accomplish those plans in compliance with the BMP manual. It addresses the requirements in our pit permit for large construction projects to be, to obtain coverage under the Idaho Construction General Permit. And they have to complete a stormwater pollution prevention plan or a SWIP, as opposed to just a regular erosion and sediment control plan for smaller projects. A large project is defined as those that disturb one or more acres of land during the process. And that includes some plans that are broken up over a certain period of time, but are part of one greater common plan. We'll have to get that CGP coverage. A few sections were added that were not part of any of our current city code. Major one of those is illicit discharge detection and elimination, or IDDE, specifically required by the permit. Those additions require people to eliminate illicit discharges or illicit connections. You know, illicit discharges are anything like spills, dumping, anything that shouldn't go into the stormwater system. Well, illicit connection is essentially a pipe that's gone to the wrong sewer system. As the Public Works and Finance Committee, Haley Lewis, correctly identified Cousin Eddie dumping sewage from an RV as an illicit discharge, so. I would shout out to her.
Thank you for the graphic.
So if there's any questions about that section, I'll take them now.
I guess to that end, I mean, what if it's an unknowing, you know, not a willful spill, right? Like, if, yeah, if someone's driving and they're carrying some sort of material and they, you know, get in a wreck and it spills and it gets into the stormwater, is there penalty for that? Or is there a notification that needs to happen immediately that that's gone into the stormwater system?
I'll touch on that with the ERP, the Enforcement Response Plans. It does talk specifically about that. I can just hit it right now a little bit. So, you know, it's an escalating enforcement response. It can jump to higher things if it was complete negligence or if it leads to, you know, a significant injury to environment, human health, our infrastructure, anything like that. So those enforcement response policies do address that specifically. It depends, I guess, you know, really.
That's the fair response.
How, what the specifics of that and of that.
But there are mechanisms in place to address that, for sure. Okay, great. Thanks, Ty.
Here we go. ERP is enforcement response policies, again, specifically required by the permit along with the Stormwater Best Management Practices Handbook, which is, you know, it requires a specific written set of standards so that folks who are, who must comply with this have the ability to know how to do that, right, a roadmap. So I'll start with the ERPs. You know, as we talked about, it's a very specifically defined mechanism that says exactly how the city will respond to violations of our code. They have to include, you know, and what ours do have includes appropriate educational or enforcement actions. You know, it's really going to depend on exactly what that's on the individual.
Who writes these?
This is, these are the codes. These are the, there are the three enforcement response policies.
That are written by the city?
Yes, these are ones that we have, yeah, we have compiled, and those are the three attachments here.
Okay, I misunderstood because we were talking about the responsibilities of the developers if they do more than one acre, and then all of a sudden, we were here, and I didn't know if they had to write this up or...
No, the first portion was about the changes to city code, right? So we've moved on. Cousin Eddie was the transition. I guess maybe I should have made that a little more.
Maybe that's why I kind of blocked it out. Yeah.
I apologize.
Nope, that's all right.
So these enforcement response policies really spell out for the specific things that we have to meet, what that looks like. Is it education? Is it a warning? Is it a further enforcement? And those are required to be, to escalate, to, you know, you can't continue to slap on the wrist, right? If there's a continued violation, then the response must be proportional. Our preferred approach is verbal education and documented instructions to reach compliance. You know, if it's someone that's dumped something, that's pretty easy, right? Here's a notify, this is not okay. When we're working with our construction folks, that's something we've been doing for the past two and a half years. It's been a major part of that, our inspector's job is working with all those folks that are, you know, that are covered by these requirements. And so none of this is going to be a big surprise now that it's here. Compliance history, how you respond when an issue occurs, and the things that you do once an issue does occur that violates code can be considered in our response, right? You let us know immediately, hey, we had this excursion, we've done ABC. Our response will, can be informed by that, and it will be, as it should. As I kind of talked about there, Bryce, if we have the option to escalate to a higher response level as appropriate, and this is, again, language specifically from our permit. The three areas that require an ERP, IDDE, permanent stormwater controls, like we talked about with our detention facilities and such, and then with active construction site runoff control. They're all essentially the same, so I'll just kind of give the basics here. If you have any questions, I can expand a little bit. If there is an issue, we'll start with a verbal warning with instructions for compliance. Following that, if the issue continues, there'll be a warning violation, which is a documented, an actual written letter warning that this will be the actions that will happen if you don't meet these certain requirements by this certain date. So it'll be very, very much spelled out. Here is exactly what is expected to reach compliance. Failure to meet that compliance schedule will result in the issuance of a notice of violation, or NOV.
Do you have a standard time at all, like, days, weeks, in between if you notice it's not happening?
You know, well, and that's, every situation's different, right? And there are some things, there are some things where it's pretty routine, right? Especially as we're working with our construction folks where after, they understand the process. So those can be pretty quick, especially considering weather. You know, if this is in July, that's a lot different than if it's in October or November, when storms are frequent. So there are some things that are spelled out really specifically, and others have a little bit of, you know, just applying our knowledge and working with those folks.
Thanks.
If we do get to the point of an NOV, some of the options that we can utilize are issuance of a stop-work order, if that's appropriate, you know, depending on which one of these we're working within. An issuance of an infraction, generally for the first or second violation. That's, you know, like a ticket, you know, like getting a speeding ticket, as opposed to the next step, which is an issuance of a misdemeanor citation. This process is in line with Idaho law for how we can apply these penalties. Next option, if an NOV, if those specific compliance requirements are not met, will be the issuance of a continued violation. And again, those same penalties are applicable once we've moved through that process of infractions or misdemeanors. And that can be for each day that that noncompliance remains. So these can add up quickly and can be significant. This is straight from the city of Moscow. You can see on the right, that's water that's not being influenced by an active construction site. And on the left is very much influenced by that. So, you know, kind of a good visualization of why these are required. Any other questions on enforcement response plans before I move on to the BMP?
Question, what if a site has something like trash blowing around? Plastics, things that would go into the sewer, is that a violation of this?
It is, and that is specifically for, like, those larger sites where you see that a lot. That SWIP, that stormwater pollution prevention plan goes beyond the ESC. But that is, yes, I mean, any of the, any trash or debris or chemicals that you generate as a result of those construction activities, yeah, that's at a minimum, it's littering if it's trash. It is, it can be more significant than that, depending on the specifics.
So what if it's not this obvious? You know, you're talking about chemicals.
Sure.
What if I can see through it?
Yeah, and that's, you know, it's a good point. And that's part of the inspection process that we have, which we are required to have a certain amount of inspections to see, are you storing your chemicals correctly? Are your portable toilets secured so they can't be blown over by the wind? So there are a lot of those things that are covered through the rest of the process that I haven't hit everything here. But yes, it is, it is, there is opportunity for some of these things to slip through if it's... But there's also indications of those things, right? Most chemicals, even if they're not visually noticeable, there will be often something else that will indicate. indicate. Anything else? Okay, that leads us to the final portion of our presentation here is the, the Stormwater Best Management Practices Handbook. Uh, best management practices are, you know, those, those specific set of activities that you can do to, to mitigate potential issues, uh, or those that are, have occurred. Uh, we currently have a handbook that is, uh, 27 years old now, so, um, quite outdated and does not have enough, uh, detail in it to meet our MS4 permit requirements. The, the new handbook is, it's very specific, and it, uh, it has a, it has a lot, and it covers everything from, you know, the, the engineering design from the folks before a shovel hits the ground, or a D5 cat, what have you, um, all the way through the process while those construction activities are happening, and then is, uh, as well as the, the permanent, um, controls that are, that are installed, and how those have to be operated to, to be effective. It really, there, there are, there are a ton of, you know, there are literally hundreds of BMPs that have to be applied. So this, the, the city's BMP handbook is that roadmap to help our designers and our construction operatives to, to navigate it. How do I do this? It, it, it really just guides them down the right path to be able to meet requirements. That's, um, you know, I talked about briefly in our meeting with Public Works and Finance Committee, that, um, compliance assistance is, is our goal. We want, we want everyone to be successful. It's better for our community, for the, uh, and it's better for us, right? Let's, let's all get on the same page. Um, these are the two best management practices manuals that we cite, uh, the Idaho BMP catalog, um, it's pretty standard, everyone's going to be familiar with that if you've worked in any of the other communities that have a similar regulations and a similar permit, of which there are many. Um, and then the Stormwater Manual for Eastern Washington, it is, it's more in-depth than the Idaho catalog. Our neighbors, straight to the west in Pullman, and everyone from, from Clarkston to Spokane, so anyone that does, um, that does work in this area will be familiar with that, um, some continuity with our, our local contractors, um, and the, and it's very detailed and very, very prescriptive, so. With that, if there are no other questions regarding the BMP handbook?
I've got one for you, sort of, kind of.
Sure.
Uh, you've got the heating oil truck going north on Polk Street, tries to dodge a cat that's in the road, winds up flipped into Hog Creek. It's not intentional, but for sure it's a violation. So what happens?
Yeah, and again, right, that's, looking at all the details, where did they have everything secured, right? Were they operating it while impaired? Were they, did they do their, their checks that you're supposed to when you're hauling that sort of stuff? Or was it, is it just a, a total freak of nature? Right? Those things do happen. So, um, you know, we look at intent, how you're operating, uh, those, it's a really good question. The specifics are, are really tough.
Then who has to show up with the straw bales and stuff like that to try to stop the oil from making its way all down to Paradise Creek through underneath conduits, underneath Furniture Center, and underneath Rosars, and all these things?
It's very complicated, and it can happen, that can happen very quickly. Uh, certainly, our stormwater operations crew will respond as soon as possible. Uh, Chief Nickerson's crew will be there, we, especially for something that's hazardous, um, flammable, things like that, those, those are the folks that we get on site immediately.
So to maintain compliance, we've actually got plans in place to respond to things like that?
We do. We, we've, it has happened, you know, there was not, not so long ago, I mean, there's been spills of oil and gas, gasoline, um, so it does happen, we have responded to it. There are also, also requirements for the, you know, we will respond immediately, and as soon as we can, but there are requirements for the responsible party to, you know, whether that's call it an emergency response company, uh, in the area to help with cleanup, uh, we're able to recover costs, because those response are, our response to an individual's actions is, you know, that's the public response, so.
Okay, and this is a weird follow-up, and I'm sorry, but I can't seem to help myself to ask this. Let's say it was the cat that dashed out that caused the crash, the cat gets hit and is microchipped, does that go back to the owners of the cat? No, I'm serious, though. Does that go back to the owner of the cat?
You know, that would be certainly someone who's much more well-versed in, in the law than myself. Uh, and, and we can't plan for every contingency, right? I mean, these are, it could happen. Uh, you know, there are a lot of things that, 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 that really could happen. Uh, we can't plan for all of them, we can't anticipate all of them. What we've got here is a set of regulations that are going to handle most of the things that happen on a day-to-day basis. So when those come up, we will, uh, I'm sure we'll be talking with Mia and Amber, uh, a lot, frequently, for some time. Fun question, though.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary.
Second.
I have a statement before we do this. Um, I have to say that when we started this a couple, three, four, seven years ago, I was really concerned about it being a real barrier to development and barrier to business, you know, we don't, we don't need that, right? Um, but I have to applaud, and I'm looking at you, Tyler, and you, my friend, as well, the, the evolution that we've made from a rather reactive, oh my gosh, we have this giant thing that's going to cost us $137,000 a minute if we don't be compliant, to this more proactive, measured approach. And I really, um, you know, I really had nothing other than, okay, go team, to do with it, but I'm very impressed with us. So thank you for your incredibly hard work and for getting us to the second one of these. This is pretty impressive.
That's, that is what we're here for, and your support is appreciated, you know, with, we're all, we're all a team here, you know, and there are a lot of different departments to come together, so thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question that kind of piggybacks off that comment, Gina. So I am curious, like, when you, when you are talking with new developers and you're kind of explaining, um, a lot of this, like, how is it received with, with new developers, especially as Moscow continues to grow? Um, yeah.
You know, and it's, uh, it has been a process. It's something, like I said, we've worked through for a while. Um, and with everyone from the small, single-family home builder who is just doing this on a small basis to some of the largest companies in the West, um, for those bigger folks, it's nothing new. You know, this is, we're not inventing any wheels here. This is, we've, we've borrowed and gathered everything that's already happened.
Sure.
Um, for the smaller local folks, again, that education portion has been, it's the best tool. Uh, Marcus Miller, who was our inspector, spends a lot of time with those folks from the planning phase to, here's my initial, here's what I want to do, okay, to do that, ABC.
Great.
You do it in this, in this manner. So, uh, it has been a process, but it's been one that we, we knew it was going to be. This is, uh, it's not, it's not fun, not everyone's happy to see us. It does, not, some of these things do take some effort and some time, uh, but with the right planning and with the right education, it is, it's approachable, and it's not anywhere close to insurmountable, insurmountable for any of our, our local folks, so.
Great, thank you, Ty.
Sure. So.
Cool.
Little recap here, I know.
Already moved.
Already moved.
Motion in a second.
I was ready to.
Please do, no, that's okay.
Moved and seconded. So, uh, Bryce?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
And there we go. So now we have.
You didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah.
Are you left for clump?
It'll be okay. I'm adaptable.
Anti-climb, they're sorry.
That's okay.
Now we get to read the longer-than-average ordinance.
Try to read it with passion.
No, you can't read this thing with passion, this is awful. So, is ordinance number 2025-06. In ordinance of the City of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for the repeal of Moscow City Code Title V, Chapter 15, Stormwater Runoff Control, and replace with a new Chapter 15 Stormwater Regulations, to provide the purpose, definitions, applicability, and administration of stormwater regulations, to provide regulations for illicit discharge, and stormwater runoff control, to provide a stormwater division administration, policies, and procedures, stormwater user fee, billing, and enforcement of payment of stormwater fees, stormwater fund and expenditures, enforcement, inspections, investigations, penalties, rules, and regulations, and livability and liability for injury or damage, providing for the repeal of Moscow City Code Title V, Chapter 19, Stormwater User Fees, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title VII, Chapter 1, Section 1 through 4, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for the ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Whew.
Riveting.
I was hoping to have, you know, interpretive dance going on behind me or something. So moving on.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
There's a section, second action on that item for the resolution and attachments?
Yes.
I move that we approve the proposed resolution and associated attachments.
Second.
Moved and seconded, so, uh, Julia?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
And Gina?
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes, uh, happily without a reading. So.
You gotta show us anyway, don't you?
It's there. You all did it, you all said it, so, uh, I'm totally fine being cut off. Please let me know. If you have any questions, I'll be fishing for the next some, couple of days, so please, until next week, but, uh, yeah, please reach out if, if you have any questions as we.
Great work. Great work.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks, Ty.
Well done.
Lot of work, Tyler.
All right, next up is the approval of EMS study professional, professional service agreement with the Matrix Consulting Group from Fire Chief Brian Nickerson. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Chief.
Um, before you have a, an agreement, um, to conduct a EMS study for the entire county, um, which is run, going to be run through the city, um, but all parties within the county, or majority of the parties in the county are going to participate. Um, during the review process, we had, um, 10, um, 10 submittals, um, four, four folks got together and individually graded those and selected the Matrix Group, um, consulting for, for the work. Um, and one of the reasons specifically why we chose them was because they kind of met the criteria mostly of a smaller agency, county-wide type of adventures, if you will, um, to review. Um, so therefore, they were the best suited for, for the job for us. Um, the first $50,000 will come from the city, um, the volunteers will pick up the other 20, um, for the agreement, and we hope to get this started, um, here in the next few weeks, um, and hopefully completed by, by the end of the year, hopefully. So if not, it'll be right after first of the year, so, um, it's gonna, it's gonna basically tell us the sustainability and some actions and recommendations going forward for not only us here in the city, but also those out in the county. Those are not all things that you have to do, it'll be recommendations and, and opportunities to, to move forward together, so. And that could look in many different forms. So it's a kind of a wide-open, um, review, so. But I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Chief, um, and I'm sorry to make you, maybe pull some numbers off the top of your head, so you can give me a, you can give me a, a spitball estimate here. But when you all gave the presentation a couple of months ago about, um, calls out in the county, do you have a rough remembrance of that figure?
We run about 130 out in the county.
Out in the county.
But more and more today, we are taking an, an ambulance also.
Yeah.
So that puts a bigger burden. It's not just, we're not just providing just the parabetic service outside the city. Um, I can tell you, just within the last four days, twice we had to take an ambulance outside the city to go somewhere else. So it, it's becoming a little more frequent, and those are all things that they will look at. Um, I think last year, I think we calculated, I want to say 30 times, it was an ambulance throughout the entire year. So, so yeah, it's, it's a considerable amount.
Out of, out of how many ambulances does the department have?
We have four.
Yeah, yeah.
On average, we have two tied up at any given time. Sometimes there's three, sometimes lately it's been four. So it's been, it's been a challenge. So again, they're going to look at all of these things, um, collectively as, uh, as the county, and those that do participate, and then develop a matrix or recommendations going forward of, of what each individual can do, or collectively as a group, um, what maybe we can share, whether it's purchasing or whatever, so.
Thank you.
How responsive, um, were some of your county friends in doing this study, doing this work?
It's been a little bit of a challenge.
Yeah.
But, um, I had two different organizations actually participate in the review, um, out of the five. So, um, we had, we've had a lot of conversations over the last year, year and a half, me and Bill's been to the EMS council meeting a couple of times. We've visited with the county commissioners just to let them know what's going on. Um, and after this, I'm going to let them know who we selected and, and all that, just so they're aware. Um, so, um, I would say it's going to get down to when we start this, you know, who's going to have that buy-in to, to give all that information that they're going to request and have, and, and then we'll just go from there, so.
Gina? I, I appreciate the scope of this, of this effort. I think it's important. Um, and I do believe that it's baby steps, and I know two out of five, okay, but, but you'll get, you'll get momentum as this project goes on. Will the, will part of this, uh, group's findings or what they investigate be, um, how to, how to market, how to get it out there to the others, to, or are they leaving this alone and just looking at?
I guess I don't quite understand.
Well, I'm wondering if there's a way, a part of this, what they're going to bring to you, if part of it is how to, how to gain more of the smaller communities, or gain more of the outlying, um, services. Will that, will they help you?
So they will, they will reach out to each one of those entities.
Excellent.
Throughout this process.
Okay.
Um, at the very beginning. We'll have a kickoff meeting and, and opportunities for them to meet. Um, and then it'll be up to them to choose if they want to continue to move forward with it. Um, we had no indication, I don't think, at any meeting that it was just like, no, we're not, we're totally not interested. We didn't, there was nobody that said that. It's just kind of like the, wow, this is a big deal, it's a big project, kind of scary.
Yeah.
Because they're going to tell you where some weak spots are and some good things, and, and, you know, you're going to get both sides of it. Um, but in reality, you need to know those things to, to be able to improve yourself, and that's no different than us. So if we find weak, weaknesses and stuff, we can look at those things and figure out what we can do going forward too. So it's really no different than, than the outlying agencies, so.
Well, if you don't bring it up, you can't really solve it.
Right.
So I agree, and I, and I do, I do believe that as you go on and it gains momentum, that there, it'll be less of a failure to adopt.
Yeah, it, and the thing is, is that if they don't want to participate, they won't be included in it. So we will work around each one of those that, that don't want to. And I, my hope is, and at the end of the day, that all of them will.
Yeah, mine as well. Okay, thank you.
Just want to say it'd be good to, to, to look at data, you know, we, we have a lot of anecdotal stories, but it'll be good to look at more data about what's going on in the county with the EMS services, and, yeah, it's always good.
So. Thank you. Uh, I move that we approve the MS study professional services agreement with Matrix Consulting Group.
Second.
Moving seconded, any other discussion? Okay, Gina?
Aye.
Drew, Drew's not here. Bryce?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
And Sandra?
Aye. Other Drew.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, that's the end of our, uh, agenda list. Uh, moving on to reports from council. Ready to go, Julia?
Yeah, sure. Um, I did not have a lot of city meetings this past week, except for council leadership, um, but just open my, um, this week I do have the Human Rights Commission, the, uh, Clearwater Economic Development Association meeting, which is quarterly. Um, I want to remind everybody to vote, if they haven't voted yet, for the library board, um, in Leeta County, not just Moscow. And I wanted to say, because I have a short report.
Okay.
That the Moscow High School girls tracked. That the Moscow High School Girls Track Team won state this year by a lot.
Woo-hoo. Go Bears.
Coming in first over Bishop Kelly, which is not, has not been an easy team to beat in the past. So pretty proud of those Moscow High School girls.
Sandra.
Okay, I had a, I had a fun couple of weeks. I think, um, no offense to any of the other groups on here, but I think my favorite meeting was the 1912 Development, uh, Meeting, uh, giving a, a presentation about what is happening on the third floor, new developments going on there and slightly new plans, nothing major, just different ways to put things in. And it's always just great to go up to that third floor, I've given a lot of tours up there and it's really fun to be back and see, um, how things are changing and plans and, and how pretty it's just going to be up there. So I really appreciate all the work going on in the Development Committee. And then I have a confession that I had, um, fire and I'm sorry that the chief left because I totally was all ready to go to my, um, volunteer fire meeting and I got really, um, wrapped up and delayed by a seven-year-old party. I didn't even have time to call anyone to come and maybe fill in for me. So I apologize for missing that meeting, I hate when that happens. Um, we had the URA meeting last, I think it was Thursday, where we, um, nothing significant happened, but we felt like it'd been a while since we heard from, um, different organizations that, that had shown interest in the past and we wanted just updates. So we got some updates from a couple of private groups and then also from the University of Idaho and it was a really nice opportunity to see some plans, see some new dreams, um, talk things out without having to make any decisions that we just got to learn and ask questions and that felt nice for a change. So I feel like we're progressing and I'm excited about where we're headed with that. University of Idaho graduation, um, that was pretty excellent, um, in a lot of different ways. I always loved that time of year. And then we had fire graduation and, um, at that same night, we had a library board meeting. I know that Bryce and I were hopping around to both places, which was pretty great. Um, I love going to the fire department graduations, um, they're just, they work so hard and there's so many special things going on there and they do so much for our community and no one really wants to like, share about all the cool things they do, so we get to do that for them. And so it was, uh, it's always great to be a part of that, I'm thankful that we're invited every time. And then the library board, uh, forum, which, um, was great. It was wonderful to see that many people out talking about the library and the passion of the library and, and what libraries mean to people. And, um, I lo, I really did love listening to all the folks up there talk about why they were doing, running, what was important to them about libraries. Um, I feel really fortunate that I've been a part of libraries my entire life. I grew up a block away from one and feel like I spent most of my time there and probably ran away more than once going to the library. So, um, vote tomorrow, I, I echo Julia on that, so. I think that was, oh, and I also had a great, uh, visit with the board president of the Humane Society of the Palouse, so, um, good things happening all the way around.
Gina. Okay, um, Transportation Commission and I, do I still have? It's going to be so fun, you're going to love it. It's a good, 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 and I'm, I'm anxious to hear your perspective. So we don't have a lot of, um, bicycle slash pedestrian voices on the group, so it'll be awesome, so welcome. Um, what's really cool is that this group is, I mean, some of these people have been on this commission since commissions were born, um, and so it's, it's a lot of really passionate, dedicated people and we, um, we needed to elect a new vice chairperson because our chairperson stepped away. And no, there weren't all of the people at the table and they all felt guilty about signing somebody up that wasn't there. And it was so funny to watch them because you know they were evil enough to think we could do this, they're not going to stop us, but then they felt guilty and so they chaired it, they, or tabled it, some sort of furniture. Um, they tabled it until the next meeting, but what, it's, it's a really cohesive, it, it shows, you know, they're cohesive in their lack of evil. Um, what was fun too is that Tanya Dennison is just, Tanya?
Tanya.
Tanya. Tanya has just been, um, appointed to the, to the Transportation Commission and she came from the Pathways Commission that was just dissolved. So we had that sad moment, right, of the, now this one is gone, but she had, uh, uh, kind of a little bit of a presentation brought along and talked about the things that she would like to see the Transportation Commission do with some of the ideas from the Pathways Commission. And it was just cool to hear the, the linkages and the, and the deliberate choice to be appointed, you know, instead of just kind of signed up because, well, you're not at the meeting. So, um, I really appreciated that and I think the group really enjoyed hearing her perspective. Um, we will all sincerely miss Erin Bacon and I, I've tried since I started on council to be on a commission with her and she keeps quitting the ones that I get signed up for. Wonder what the deal is. Um, talked about farmer's market, um, table for, you know, the, the Transportation Commission and what it actually means. This group is not a group of, let's just sign up and show up, they want to know what their purpose is, it's, it's fascinating. So they want to understand what tabling means for the Transportation Commission. Do we point out that there's streets? You know, I mean, that, what's the deal? So, um, I can tell you that it'll be towards the end of the summer, July 26th into, and then maybe again August 23rd, but, um, there will be more coming. Um, there are scooters coming to our community, guys remember that? We talked about that how many months ago? They're coming, they're coming, um, probably mid, midsummer. That's the, the guess that I'm getting is that they're, they're coming midsummer. Um, and, and they won't, they won't, um, challenge the little robots running around downtown either because I haven't seen a lot of those either, but we should have 150 scooters coming soon to, uh, help convey us in non-traditional ways, um, around our community. And I didn't have anything else except that we had, didn't we all go to a, a workshop with the school district?
None of us have said.
Um, and, and I have to tell you, I learned more in that hour than I, I thought. There's a, there's a really great school board group, there's, uh, Sean Teagues has his, um, he has his, his marching orders well thought out and I really believe that there's some great stuff coming to our communities, our community, um, as a, as a function of what the school district does. So that was a fun hour, um, and it was interesting to listen to Dulce. Dulce had some ideas about how, um, you know, the, the impact of a, like Russell, when we closed down Russell and how, or when the school district closed Russell and how it, a deteriorating building and, uh, had the effect that it did on the, on the community and the kids and that kind of thing. And it was just, it was awesome, so, um, that was kind of cool. I don't know if we recorded it or not, but it was a, it was a good, good event. That's all I have.
Bryce.
Nice, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so yeah, a little bit repetitive with, with some of, uh, what has already been said, uh, tonight. Um, but since our last meeting on May 5th, um, I also attended the firefighters' graduation on May 7th and that same night, uh, also attended the candidate forum for the library board. Can just be a broken record here, make sure you vote tomorrow. Um, yeah, make sure you vote tomorrow. Um, on Thursday, May 8th, it was actually a busy week that week now that I'm thinking about it. Uh, on Thursday, May 8th, I attended the Leadership Moscow graduation at the Best Western. So Leadership Moscow is a program put on through the Chamber of Commerce, um, where, where folks in the community want to cultivate and, and develop their leadership skills, um, in whatever way that means to them. And it's a year-long, about a year-long, um, class and they had their graduation that midday and just really impressive and excited to see all these people in Moscow that want to take on more responsibility in whatever way that means within their organization or their place of work, whatever that may be. And, um, yeah, it was, it was really nice. And then I zipped across town because also that same day was, um, the City of Moscow Employee Recognition Barbecue Champs. Is that, it's an acronym, right?
Yeah.
I don't remember it, but it's an acronym.
Something.
City something, nice.
Humans and.
Many people.
Bill, save them, save them, Bill.
Oh, now I need to remember.
She's got it.
Uh, I think you was citing higher achievement in public service.
That's it, nice, so.
We were really close.
So I went to, I went to that, uh, um, yeah, I went to, to that, that barbecue, um, on the 8th. And again, just really, um, encouraging to celebrate so many dedicated individuals that work for the city. Um, and just really impressive of every, everything that happens behind the scenes to keep us moving, uh, whether that be literally or metaphorically with regards to the stormwater, with regards to, um, roads and, and just everything, so. Um, and last week, as mentioned, um, I had the workshop with Moscow School District. I echo Gina's comments, they were perfectly stated. Uh, and then Arts Commission last Tuesday. And one really neat thing that they started talking about was there's an open call for Moscow's newest poet laureate. Um, so the last three years, it's been held by Stacy Bo Miller. Um, and her time as poet laureate is coming to an end. And so if you, or if you know anybody that might be a good representative of the city, um, being the poet laureate, definitely send them to the city website to submit an application and that'll kind of work through the process with that term beginning in October, so. And then tomorrow I have Sustainable Environment Commission. There we go, moving and grooving.
Cool. As for me, um, had airport board meeting last week and things are going along well there. Uh, accepted, uh, the grant money and initiated construction for the fourth apron slot at the airport, which is a major bit of construction. Fortunately, we still have the grant money from the FAA, it hasn't been pulled, so we're going to spend it before it disappears and put in, uh, a lot of money just to construct the place for one more airplane to sit at the gates. Uh, major, major bit of construction that. Uh, as Tony Bean, the Airport Manager Director says, uh, the speed dating with the airlines went well. He and Paul Kimmel went down and discussed potential air service enhancements with as many airlines as they could get in with and some of the results are looking very promising. Uh, chief among them is that the service to Boise come to September will be six days a week, not two, not three, but six, every day except Saturday. Uh, so that's looking good. Uh, also the potential for service to Portland is part of a route. And, uh, then alternate airlines, uh, possibly moving in to fill up some more slots that are not named Alaska. Uh, let's say we did have the champs meeting, our opportunity to get city employees together, all 160 of them, to come together and, uh, talk amongst themselves and realize what good work they do for the citizens of Moscow that often goes unrecognized, except when something goes off the rails and then suddenly everybody's concerned about how the city's working. And, uh, the big issue that's coming up for everybody here at this podium pretty soon is the city budget, which is here and I'm finishing my review. There's some more finishing touches to be put to it yet. Didn't incorporate things like the final fees for insurance programs, things like that. Uh, but we'll get that out to council for their review and as summer progresses, there'll be a city council workshop on budget and then in August 8th, I think, is it the?
July 8th.
Yep, July 8th, but then the hearing is August.
August 4th.
Thank you. And that's when you can show up and, uh, participate in the budget planning for the next year for the city. So everybody save the dates. Um, anything from over there, Bill?
Nothing from staff this evening.
Hark, do I hear a motion?
Yes.
I move that we adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned, thank you all very much for showing up and sticking to this.